Good afternoon, colleagues. The August 17th, 2020 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:01 PM. I'm Lauren Agonzales, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call?
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Councilmember Herbold? Councilmember Juarez?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Herbold?
Here.
Council President Gonzalez?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Presentations, colleagues. We have one presentation this afternoon. Councilmembers, we will have an opportunity to hear a short presentation from the parents of Machance Dunlap Gittens, who, as we all recall, experienced, had an unfortunate experience with law enforcement that ended his life and is being remembered today by the Seattle City Council through the passage, hopefully, of the Machance Dunlap Gittens Ordinance, as proposed in Council Bill 119840. Again, this council bill is on today's agenda. So, colleagues, if there is no objection, we will hear a brief presentation from the parents of Machance Dunlap Gittens. Hearing no objection, we will hear from Alexis Dunlap Francois and Frank Dunlap Gittens at this point in time. And I think our legislative IT folks are ready to unmute that line, but we'll give them a little, little chance to do so. And whenever, whenever they are ready, they may address the council.
They are not on the line, council members.
They are not yet on the line. Okay. Well, colleagues, it looks like they didn't have enough time to get on the line, so perhaps we can go through the approval of the minutes and adoption of the referral calendar. Madam Clerk, can I ask procedurally if I can come back to presentations? And if so, if I need to reserve the right to do that or otherwise request for permission to do so?
Council President Gonzalez, this is Amelia Sanchez. I recommend that you hold presentations until the conclusion of adoption of the agenda.
Okay. I will, I will move to hold presentations until the end of the adoption of approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And then, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on that motion?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and presentations will be held until after the adoption of the approval of the agenda. Okay, let's go ahead and move through approval of the minutes. The minutes of the city council meeting of August 10th, 2020 have been reviewed. If there is no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. And I'd ask that the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes. Adoption of the referral calendar. I move to adopt the introduction and referral calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the introduction and referral calendar. Councilmember Peterson, you have an amendment, I understand, to the introduction referral calendar based on this morning's conversation. So I'm going to hand it over to you to make that formal motion to amend the referral calendar.
Thank you, Council President. So many executive departments are eager to have us adopt lots of legislation that, you know, because we've been so focused on important matter, rebalancing the budget. So there's legislation that departments are eager to get through. Taking a look at the introduction referral calendar, I want to make sure a couple items go to, go to my committee, just so there's more discussion in case people have questions. So I'd like to move to amend the introduction referral calendar by amending the committee referral of items three and four, Council Bills 119870 and 119871, by amending the committee referral from the city council to the Transportation Utilities Committee, where they normally would go.
Zero second. It's been moved and seconded to amend the referral of Council Bills 119870 and 119871 to the Transportation and Utilities Committee. Councilmember Peterson, anything else to add to this motion?
No, Council President.
Okay, colleagues, are there any comments or questions on the proposed amendment? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Here.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. The motion carries and the introduction and referral calendar is adopted as amended. Okay, approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is, oh, sorry, Councilmember Strauss, please.
Thank you, Council President. I was just taking a moment to notice how long our agenda is today and wondering if we needed any more time to filibuster before our presenters could join us, or have they already joined us?
I will have to defer to our IT folks. Are our guests available?
Negative, those guests are not available.
Okay.
Would you like me to continue speaking about the agenda until they are present? Or shall we?
It's okay. I do believe that they signed up for public comment as, as well. So we will call on them in the ordinary due course of public comment. We were hoping to be able to hear from them during presentations to allow them a little bit more than the allotted two minutes, but unfortunately, we weren't able to make that happen. And I apologize for that, that that wasn't able to work out. So we'll go ahead and move through the items of our agenda. Approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Again, presentations will dispense with presentations. Public comment. At this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the city council agenda, introduction and referral calendar, and the council's 2020 work program. I appreciate everyone's ongoing patience as we continue to operate the system and to navigate through their changes. We are continuously looking for ways to fine tune this remote process and adding new features that will allow for additional means of public participation in our council meetings. It does remain our strong interest and intent to have public comment regularly included on meeting agendas. However, the city council does reserve the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that the system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and in a manner in which we are able to conduct our necessary business. I will moderate today's public comment period. We will have public comment period for 20 minutes. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the city council. I will call on each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the council's website. If you've not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to the council's website at seattle.gov/council, that's C-O-U-N-C-I-L. The public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt of you have been unmuted will be the speaker's cue that they must now hit star six in order to speak and be heard by the council. Again, please begin speaking by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. As a reminder, public comment should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, or the council's 2020 work program. At about 10 seconds, each speaker will hear a chime. That is your cue that you should begin to wrap up your public comment because you only have about 10 seconds left of your allotted two minutes. If speakers do not end their comments at the end of the allotted time provided, the speaker will be automatically muted in order to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you've completed your public comment, we ask that you please disconnect from the line. And if you plan to continue following this meeting, we'd ask that you do so via Seattle Channel or the listening options listed on the published agenda. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six before speaking. And let me go ahead and quickly pull up this list here. Apologies, I am toggling between many screens here. All right, our first two speakers is our Cause Han, followed by Frank Gittens.
Good afternoon. My name is Cause Han. One breath. And so as a mother, I am urging you to pass the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Rights Ordinance. All of our kids deserve to be treated as kids, ensuring that all children under 18 have the opportunity to speak with a knowledgeable adult, in this case, a public defender, who has their best interests relinquished their rights. And since ordinance require police officers to talk with a public defender before consenting to a search or to be being interrogated after Miranda warnings are given. They must have an opportunity to talk to a lawyer when detained by police before waiving their rights or consenting to a search. These interactions with police can impact their freedom and their future. They really deserve this protection. And as Sean Good from 2180 points out, if this bill impedes the justice system, then the system isn't doing justice. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Frank Gittens, followed by Carolyn Akinbami.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Gittens, My Chance Dunlap Gittens father. I just wanted to thank everyone that supported us in this cause for the last few years. And I'm just glad to be here. My chance wanted to be a lawyer and attorney, and he strived to be those things and to help young people and to help older people and to help all of us. And he was a gift that was given to myself and his mother. And now he can continue to be a gift that's going to keep on giving to, to everyone in this city. And I'm just proud to be a father and that he's going to protect our youth, even in his death. And, and I just want to thank everyone for being here and supporting it, the council. And I can name a whole bunch of names, but I think you know who you are that supported us and supported this ordinance. And I really appreciate you. And that's really all I have. And hopefully, this ordinance goes through. And again, it'll protect our whole community forever. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Really appreciate hearing from you. Next up is Carolyn, followed by Alice Lockhart.
Hi, this is Dr. Carolyn Akinbami. I'm a pediatrician who lives in District Three on Capitol Hill, and I want to thank the Seattle City Council for the important work you've been doing to create effective, evidence-proven systems for public safety in Seattle. I'm asking you to support the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Rights Ordinance. Children, and especially Black and Indigenous kids and kids of color, are particularly vulnerable to being intimidated into waiving their Miranda rights. Everyone under the age of 18 deserves and must be given the opportunity to talk to a lawyer when detained by police before waiving their rights. I'd like to cede the rest of my time to any other members of the Dunlap Gittens family. Thank you so much for testifying today.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Alice Lockhart, followed by Erica Phelps Nishiguchi.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Alice Lockhart, here this time for the 350 Seattle Transportation Team to express our very enthusiastic support for Council Bill 119831, child near you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. Your first council bill is truly model legislation. We see it as a first step in a vision for more walkability and economic opportunity within all our neighborhoods. Code changes allowing critical services in all neighborhoods will enable all kinds of families to thrive, walking and biking to daycare, the corner store, and even to employment opportunities that may help our local economic recovery. I drove my kids across town to daycare, and thanks to you, my kids may be able to take a climate-friendly walk to daycare and pick up dinner on the way home. We encourage other council members, and of course, Councilmember Strauss, to consider whether other bills on the good things near you model can help create 15-minute neighborhoods that will curb climate pollution while aiding families and economic recovery. We also, of course, strongly support the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in, Alice. Next up is Erica, followed by Alexis Francois.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Erica Phelps Nishiguchi, and I'm a developmental behavioral pediatrician in Seattle and a constituent of Deborah Horas. I urge you to support the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Rights Ordinance. I work with children who have developmental, intellectual, and learning disabilities. As they reach adolescence, these children are at a higher risk of mental health and behavioral disorders and falling into the school-to-prison pipeline. It is important to note the synergy between systemic racism and medicine, the justice system, and our society that leads to youth of color having less access to these diagnoses and evidence-based interventions, and to more interactions with law enforcement. There are developmental changes to adolescent brains that affect their ability to understand what it means to waive their rights. These challenges are compounded for youth with disabilities, who may have difficulty with verbal comprehension, short-term memory, or processing speed that affects their response to direct questioning, and often have fewer coping skills to manage the fight-or-flight response of a frightening interaction. The Youth Rights Ordinance will be one important step towards protecting these vulnerable youths and advancing social justice. Thank you for your vote, and I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Alexis, followed by Leila Blair.
Hello. My name is Alexis Dunlap Francois. I am the mother of My Chance Dunlap Gittens, in which this particular ordinance is named in honor of. I'm a little biased in my support of this ordinance because of the loss of my son by the hands of law enforcement and also by the desire to prevent another family from suffering the pain that I feel, when it absolutely could have been avoided. There are laws in place to protect our children. One problem with the law is knowledge, and the protections for the lack of said rights or knowledge of, our youth need to have the ordinance adopted and promoted. It would be ineffective if the youth have rights that they are unaware of. I'm honored to have this ordinance named in remembrance of my son. He was a beautiful soul who always wanted to help the less fortunate, protect the weak, and defend the innocent. Please help me and the organizations in support of this ordinance and youth in general by helping to improve the relationship between our youth and law enforcement and change the laws that have been proven to be ineffective. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Leila Blair, followed by Austin Fields.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Leila Blair. I am 22 years old and a resident of District Three. As alongside, I'm also a lifelong resident of Seattle. I'm here to testify in support of the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Right to Counsel Ordinance, also known as Council Bill 119840. It is vital that our youth have the right to legal counsel before waiving any rights to speak to a public defender, before police officers can search, interrogate, or pressure our youth into giving up their constitutional rights. I know for myself, I would not have known the meaning and risk associated with waiving my constitutional rights as a youth and would feel intimidated and scared while interacting with a police officer. This ordinance would be a step in ensuring that our youth, specifically our youth of color, can make informed decisions while, when interacting with police and law enforcement. We know that the school-to-prison pipeline is disproportionately impacting Black, Indigenous, and Brown youth, and guaranteeing legal counsel to BIPOC youth is a step to ensure that less youth enter the criminal injustice system, or worse, die at the hands of police. I call upon you council members to vote to pass the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Right to Counsel Ordinance today to protect our BIPOC youth and to honor My Chance Dunlap Gittens life and his family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Austin Field, followed by Dominique Davis, and then Deshaun Neighbors.
Hello, my name is Austin Field. I am here on behalf of the Public Defender Association to voice our strong support for the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Ordinance. The association strongly supports this ordinance because it will help ensure that the constitutional rights of vulnerable young people, particularly young people of color, are protected. Young people being interrogated by police officers are uniquely vulnerable and must be given sound legal advice before deciding whether to waive their constitutional rights. Juveniles often do not understand their constitutional rights or the consequences of waiving those rights. Decades of research have shown that approximately one-third to one-half of juveniles interrogated by the police do not understand that they have the right to remain silent and to consult an attorney. Because juveniles often do not understand their rights, they often waive them. According to the American Bar Association, roughly 90% of juveniles interrogated by police waive their constitutional right to remain silent. Waiving constitutional rights can have devastating consequences for young people, especially young people of color. One study examining all exonerations in the United States over a 15-year period found that juveniles falsely confessed to crimes three times as often as adults. Almost all of these false confessions were made by youth of color, and most occurred during lengthy, frightening, and confusing police interrogations. The city of Seattle must do more to protect young people. We must approve this ordinance and require law enforcement to provide youth with an attorney before forcing them to decide whether to waive their constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Dominique Davis, followed by Deshaun Neighbors.
Hello, I'm Dominique Davis from Community Passageways. I just wanted to chime in and follow what all the other speakers are saying. I basically imagine myself, or you can imagine yourself, being a 16-year-old teenager, being detained by a group of grown men that have been trained in law enforcement tactics, and being asked question after question after question, and being almost coerced or talked into admitting something that, of a crime that they're trying to solve. This has happened so many times in our Black and Brown communities to our Black and Brown children. The criminal justice system has decimated our communities and decimated our, our young peoples' and our communities' freedom. And so I, I am here to support the My Chance bill, and I want you to understand that this is, it just shouldn't even be a question. This is a constitutional right to have legal representation at any stage. This is nothing short of child abuse if our kids aren't getting the legal representation before they even have to interact with law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Deshaun, followed by Kendrick Washington.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, how you guys doing? My name is Deshaun Neighbors. I'm with, I'm an ambassador for Community Passageways in Seattle, and I'm here in support of the My Chance Youth Rights Ordinance because I recognize the importance of youth needing attorneys present when they're having any type of interaction with police. You know, they're unaware of so many things, they're uneducated of so many things, given their age, and it's not clear for them to be set up with hidden agendas and making decisions that they're unsure of. Those decisions can impact their lives and their records forever, and we can't eliminate future opportunities for these guys because they did something or did something they had no knowledge of. Like Dom said, it really shouldn't even be a question. I don't think anybody loses here. You know, we've lost a lot of trust with the police in the community, you know, over the last years and all this. So in order to try to gain that trust back, this is something that I feel needs to happen. That's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Kendrick Washington, followed by Peter Quell.
Good afternoon. My name is Kendrick Washington with the ACOU of Washington. I am here to testify on the proposed youth right to counsel ordinance. There's been over 200 years of policing in this country, and it's risen from a sort of ragtag band of slave catchers to a modern militarized policing force. And while it's incomprehensible that such a force would be turned on the citizenry of this city, it's even more reprehensible that this force would be let loose on the children of this city today. When police interrogate children, there are virtually no differences between the interrogations of them and adults. Intimidations, lies, the false promise that the only person who is on their side is the very officer who has them backed into a corner, that this could be done without the presence of an attorney should shock the conscience of each of us. The prosecutor's office cites the erosion of trust as one of the many fallacies they listed in opposition to this bill. But you cannot erode what is not there. You build trust through honesty. You build trust through transparency, and you build trust by ensuring that every child is afforded every single right that is available to them. I hope this committee will consider passing this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Peter, followed by Kelsey McGrath. Do we have Peter on the line?
Peter's on the line.
Peter, just remember to hit star six so we can hear you.
Yes, I'm online.
There we go. I can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Peter Quell. I'm the president of Driver Union, and our agenda today to talk about is a pay. And we are so happy, very glad that the bill got into your hand, and we can't wait for you to come back and, and work on it. And we are so happy about it. And this pay is very important. It, it will give us peace, stability, to be able to pay the rent, to pay the rent, and, and also support our family. And we are glad that it got into your hand. We thank you for your support, and we also thank all our friends who sign up to support us and who appreciate our Seattle City, our City of Seattle Mayor, Janet Duncan, for stepping forward with it because many as far before never done anything, and she's on it doing it and working on that. Also, we support the union teamster for supporting the drivers, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Next up is Kelsey McGrath, followed by Noorani Fofana.
Hi, I'm Kelsey McGrath of District Three. I support the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Ordinance and urge the council members to vote yes. I'm a high school teacher, and my students are incredible humans, smart, driven, talented, compassionate, and complex, and they are children. It is unjustifiable to me that we would put our youth in intimidating, high-pressure, and power-balanced situations where they may unknowingly waive their rights, especially when the majority of youth in these interactions are Black, Indigenous, or other youth of color, due to the racism baked into our policing system. In 2019, approximately 86% of youth jailed, and in 2018, 73% of the youth charged were Black, Indigenous, or other youth of color. It is essential that we pass the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Ordinance to protect our children so they may make informed decisions with the support of a public defender before they waive constitutional rights. Lastly, I urge the council to defund SPD by 50%, at least in the upcoming 2021 budget process, and use participatory budgeting so that our BIPOC youth have power in directing community funding. Let both protect our youth and listen to our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Noorani, followed by Howard Gale.
Hello, council members. My name is Noorani Fofana. I'm an immigrant from Ghana. I'm an Uber and Lyft driver. I'm addressing the Fair Pay Bill agenda. We are happy, I mean, this agenda is in your hands now, and we thank the mayor for working with us this far. mayor for working with us, uh, this far, and, uh, thank the council members, uh, for working with us. I mean, uh, a lot. The council has done a lot for Uber and Lyft drivers, uh, so far, and, uh, we are happy, I mean, this is in your hands. We wish you all the best in your recession. We wish you a happy life. You go back, I mean, uh, you go to your recession and come back, and we are happy to work with you to get this, uh, bill, I mean, passed. And, uh, I know, uh, there's a tool, I mean, a study about the Fair Pay Bill, but on, on our side, it's just like, uh, simple as this. The, the, the city study talked to drivers. We are the drivers. Uber did their study, they did not talk to a single driver. They did not talk to a single driver. They might have record about the ride we pick, because it's on the app, and where we drop, how much they pay us, how much they charge, but they don't have any idea what we go through in expenses in our life, what, what we go through with our families medically, e- everything. Drivers has to, sometimes drivers pee in, in their seat just to make end meet. So, thank you very much, uh, council members. We are really, I mean, we can't wait for you to come back so we finish this job. Thank you very much. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Howard Gale, followed by Catherine Dawson.
Hi. Hi, this is Howard Gale from Lower Queen Anne, District Seven, speaking in support of the ordinance in honor of My Chance Dunlap Gittens, and also the resolution supporting the federal George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. However, I am very confused as to why the council is calling the federal government to take action, all of which would be taken locally by yourself, especially given the reality that this federal bill will never pass in the US Senate. For example, you call on the federal government to lower federal standards for convicting police of abuse. We could do that here. Similarly, you call on limiting qualified immunity on the federal level when we can make qualified immunity irrelevant by helping to create a state, a Washington state, cause of legal action, so that families traumatized by police abuse and violence could seek justice in local courts without having to be undercut by federal standards. Please do not ask the Fed to do what you will not. No federal legislation will bring justice for Terry J. Caver, killed by Seattle police just three months ago, is murder ignored by our supposed police accountability partners and also ignored by UPOA account. Do we only protest those killed by police not under our authority and who are 1,600 miles away? Please, I beg the council, reevaluate what our police are doing, not just beating up demonstrators, but consistently killing dozens of people in the last few years, and stop being reactive. Please be proactive. Thank you.
Next up is Catherine Dawson, followed by Lata Ahmed.
Hi, my name is Catherine Dawson. I'm a District Three renter and a former teacher. I'm calling to voice my support for the ordinance in honor of My Chance Dunlap Gittens. Thank you to all the community organizers, legal advocates, and the Dunlap Gittens family who have already testified to be important to this ordinance. Um, we need this ordinance to protect our youth, especially Black and Brown youth who are more likely to be overpleased and traumatized by law enforcement. Um, a quick, quick example from my personal experience, I was a juror on a felony case a few years ago for a 16-year-old who's being tried as an adult. The entire case hinged on the video of his police interrogation, which happened after he waived his right to counsel. Um, this 16-year-old was up for hours without ever being allowed to call his mother or a lawyer. He sat alone at the police station, he didn't know what would happen, he didn't have any adult to look to. Um, at the beginning, he's asked to sign to waive his rights, and we have video of this, he's barely looking at the paper, he's just nodding along, he's saying yes when he's prompted, he verifies, yes, all of the information is correct, uh, but when we as the jury see this paper, we see his birthday is wrong. And conveniently, this incorrect birthday makes him eighteen, not sixteen. And so, after hours at the station, faced with a hostile police officer and without any adult, this kid is agreeing to mistake in his own birthday, his birthday, and yet the law still allows him to waive his legal rights. And after waiving those rights, he's subjected to a 20-minute interrogation that's increasingly aggressive and has leading questions. At one point, the officer even asks who committed the crime and points directly at the defendant to suggest who the answer is. Um, those 20 minutes determine the rest of his life, and we know young people are more vulnerable to police coercion. That's just one example of many that I know you've heard about. Um, we hold children to this absurd, absurd and harmful standard of expecting them to have an in-depth understanding of their legal rights and the implication of signing a piece of paper. Um, this leaves children vulnerable, especially if they've had negative experiences with law enforcement, which we know is more common in BIPOC communities that are criminalized and overpoliced. Our youths deserve better. Please vote yes on the Youth Rights Ordinance and introduce legislation to close the youth jail now, not in fight.
Um, thank you for calling in, uh, today. Next up is, uh, Lata, followed by Alina Santian. Is Lata on the line?
Lata's on the line.
Lata, just remember to hit star six so we can hear you.
Can you hear me, council member?
We can hear you now, go ahead.
Thank you, council member. My name is Lata Ahmed from Oromo Community, and I am, uh, an Uber and Lyft driver. For, uh, for many years, drivers have been, uh, fighting together with the Team Star Union on behalf of, uh, uh, other thousand drivers, uh, driver union. We are glad, uh, uh, Fair Pay has, uh, arrived on, uh, City, uh, Council Day, and, uh, uh, I need, uh, uh, we need, uh, the need, uh, for Fair Pay that addresses racial equity is more, uh, important now than ever from, uh, immigrant, uh, drivers, uh, on the front line of pandemic. Uh, and the majority of these, uh, drivers, uh, are, uh, especially from, uh, African immigrants from, uh, uh, the place like, uh, Ethiopia, Eritrea, Somali Kenya, and, uh, many more. So, uh, uh, especially this, uh, Fair Pay is our, uh, main issue of, uh, you know, uh, no, uh, no one should earn, uh, at least, uh, less than, uh, minimum or, uh, living wage after expenses, uh, or, uh, a voice of, uh, uh, on the job, uh, uh, job with the benefit. So, uh, we will, uh, we will look forward, uh, to work with you, council member, uh, after you get back, uh, uh, from, uh, uh, a holiday to make, uh, drivers a, a living wage. Thank you, uh, thank you for your, uh, for your time. Thank you, council member.
Thank you, Lata, for calling in today. Next up is Alina Santian, followed by Ahmed Mohammed Mahmoud.
Uh, good afternoon, council members. Um, I first just want to lift up the My Chance Dunlap Gittens family and just, um, I know that you're taking on more emotional labor than any of us can imagine by being here. Um, so I just wanted to list that up first. My name is Alina Santian, and I am a, I serve, uh, as a commissioner for the Community Police Commission, and I am here today on behalf of the CPC to voice its strong support for Council Bill 119840, the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Rights Ordinance. My Chance Dunlap Gittens was a poet, a student, and a son. He was just 17 years old when he was killed during the investigation of a crime he did not commit. Seattle confronts the impact of policing and reimagines justice. Among our first tasks is ensuring that constitutional rights of our young people are protected. The CPC stands in solidarity with the many community organizations, along with the youth they uplift, who have led this movement and expressed their support for this legislation. They are uniquely qualified to know how best to protect our young people, especially Black, Indigenous, and other youth of color who have faced an outsized impact in our criminal justice system. The King County Council is working to pass its own ordinance with strong support from community leaders, young people, and youth advocates. I urge you, we urge you, to act alongside with them to ensure all our young people in Seattle are protected. Our youths do not live, play, or learn with a single municipal boundary. Therefore, their right to legal counsel must not vary between these boundaries. The CPC wants to uplift and thank Choose180, Community Passageways, Creative Justice, and many other community organizations who have progressed this work. Uh, Council President, I'd like to yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alina, to you and the Community Police Commission for taking a strong position on this bill. Really appreciate it. Colleagues, we're at the, uh, close to our end of public comment period. Uh, we only have a few more. Folks who signed up to give public comment today, if there's no objection, I'd like to extend the public comment period by an additional 20 minutes. Hearing no objection, we'll extend the public comment period for another 20 minutes, and we'll now hear from Ahmed, followed by Katie Hurley.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, council member, uh, uh, the opportunity that you are giving me again and again. Thank you, I really appreciate it very well. Uh, I'm just, just flow, uh, the fish, I mean, to Fair Bay. We know that you really did an effective for this, uh, year, uh, since the pandemic started, about the sick bay and, uh, hazard bay, and also just, you know, death right now, on your desk in a fair bay, and we know that you are going to support, uh, uh, Black Lives Matter, as many people are speaking of French with you right now, and we appreciate the service that you are doing for, uh, everybody who has any need. We, you are really doing a great job, working very hard 24/7, the way we see, and just passing for a lot of legislation in front of us. So, we want, please and please, I'm just saying that the legislation in front of you about the Fair Bay, we are feeding our families, and this is not our part-time job, this is our full-time job, and we want to just, you know, get in a time for our families and also pay the rent and the food on the table and everything. And we see that nowadays only Uber are making, uh, uh, you know, benefiting from this job, and I am the one who invests this job, just buying a car, putting the gas, paying insurance and everything, and all that, whatever I earn from this job, I only, you know, uh, pay for all that expenses, but I can't get enough to feed for my families. So, we want this Fair Day, please pass in a way that we, uh, demand it, although we know there is a lot of still shot, uh, from us, and we need more from you. You really support a lot and worrying about us. We know what you did before, and we know what you are going to support us all the time. Please and please, uh, make forward for this legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Katie Hurley, followed by Jennifer Gosar.
Hello, my name is Katie Hurley. I'm the Assistant Special Counsel for Issues Related to Young People at the King County Department of Public Defense. I've defended youth charged with crimes since 2007 in King County Juvenile Court, and am providing public comment and strong support of the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Rights Ordinance. One day last spring, as I finished another youth rights presentation, a 15-year-old who was living in a group home looked at me in disbelief as I explained his constitutional rights. At the end, all he said to me was, "That's not how it works." I tried to protest and explain the law and the Constitution, but he was right. I have watched too many videos where I see an armed police officer interrogating a scared kid in the back of the patrol car. Rites are read like it's BMW 500, and a youth, a child, usually a Black child, an Indigenous child, a child of color, is then interrogated by an armed police officer. Studies show that youths whose minds are still developing are more vulnerable to police coercion and of a hard time understanding, asserting, and protecting their own rights. To ensure youth, especially Black and Native youth and youth of color, do not waive their rights because they are too scared to assert them, they need to consult with a lawyer. In an extraordinary open letter to the legal community urging lawyers to take steps to confront racial injustice, the Washington Supreme Court justices said, "The injustices faced by Black Americans are not relics of the past. We continue to see racialized policing and the overrepresentation of Black Americans in every stage of our criminal and juvenile justice systems." Last year, 86% of the youth jailed in King County were Black youth, Indigenous youth, and youth of color, and 72% of the youth prosecuted. It's shocking and appalling. Our system is built on racism, and the youth, and youth are unfairly exploited in our communities. I urge each of you to pass the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Rights Ordinance to enable a more racially just future. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Um, next up is Jennifer, followed by Alisa Khosad.
Good afternoon, my name is Jennifer Gosar, and I'm a resident of District Six. Every time I find a way to be present and sign up for public comment, I find it belittling and condescending to be allotted my extensive 45 seconds to two minutes to comment on legislation that we help pay for and which significantly impacts our lives. Moving on, the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Ordinance before youth protect the rights of young people is critical, and I join in support that it be passed. Thank you to his family and to others involved for caring enough for other young people in the community to help us treat them better. It is not just important to declare our support for the Representative Diopaul's legislation, it is yet more important to act and to enact some of our own. I can't help but view this with skepticism as a vapid agenda item and vote. Once again, it shows talk with superficial character and inaction. Taking action will not be comfortable, especially if it meets the long overdue needs of our neighbors and community members. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Alisa, followed by Shamir Tana.
Hi, my name is Alisa Khosad. I'm a staff attorney with Teen Child. Teen Child provides civil legal representation to youth ages 12 to 24 in King County. These youths are often involved and impacted in the court system, including the juvenile justice system. Teen Child wholeheartedly supports the ordinance, um, the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Ordinance. We support the ordinance for reasons already highlighted, including the need to ensure that youths are being able to fully understand the consequences of their decisions before they speak to the police, because as we know, the adolescent brain is not capable of the functioning in the same way that an adult is. We also know there's greater harm caused to Black and Brown youth that are being disproportionately interrogated by the police. Teen Child also wants to highlight for the council the additional harm police interrogation causes on the youth's access to education. Police contact in the schools is something that happens regularly, often with the support of school administrators, and leads to additional coercion and pressure on youth to cooperate and make statements to the police. Some of these youths have learning disabilities that further prevent their ability to understand their rights in these situations. Many youths, after talking to the police, are removed from their schools and then lose access to educational services. The contact with the police at school causes further trauma that can be humiliating and destroy the youth's trust and relationships at their school. After the police interrogations, youths often feel unsafe and unsupported at school, and some do not return to school at all. In closing, we ask you to please pass the ordinance and decrease the harm caused by interactions on our youth with police at schools and other places. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Shamir Tana, followed by Anna Bonilla.
Hi, my name is Shamir. I'm a Seattle resident, and I'm calling to strongly advocate for passage of the Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Rights Ordinance. Um, this is such an important move to provide basic rights to youth, especially Black and Brown youth who have the most traumatic encounters with police. Uh, we talk about being an anti-racist city, and this ordinance, ordinance is a necessary step and long overdue to move towards that. Please pass this and pass it with complete majority, so there is no doubt. Um, I, I actually had a couple of quotes I had read from youth from Black and Brown communities who were impacted by this, um, and I can't even fathom, um, impact that it had on them, but instead, I actually just wanted to highlight the courageous testimony from the Chance's parents and the courageous fight that they have carried out with community leaders and organizations and supporters. Um, they're all inspirations. Uh, again, look forward to you taking action on this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Anna Bonilla, followed by Maria Batayana. Do we have Anna on the line with us? Anna, if you're on the line, you need to hit star six so we can hear you.
Hi, can?
We can hear you now.
I think I got it now.
Yeah, we, we can hear you, go ahead.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Anna Bonilla, and I'm with Enterprise Community Partners. I am here today in support of Council 119831, the Childcare New Ordinance, which passed out of the Land Use and Neighborhood Committee last week and is before you today. I want to thank Councilwoman Strauss as Chair of the Land Use and Neighborhood Committee and Prime Sponsor of the bill for bringing this important bill forward. I also want to thank the other members of the council that have worked tirelessly on issues related to childcare before today. We are in a moment of time where, as a larger society, we understand that who takes care of our children matters to all of us, regardless of the stage, phase, or place that your life is in. COVID has changed everything, and it is also changing the way we work and the way we think about our neighborhoods. The changes outlined in this bill will allow for childcare options that are closer to home as we navigate work from home for the foreseeable future. This bill removes potentially cumbersome siting requirements, allowing operators and providers to focus more on the quality and conditions of their center as already required by the state. And then lastly, providers may have an opportunity to be increasingly innovative in creating centers across the city at a time when many have already closed or on the brink. Through our Home and Health Initiative and the Washington Early Learning Facility Fund that we manage, we hope to put more of this innovation in helping cite childcare and early learning throughout the city. There's still so much more to do around childcare and early learning, but we are certainly thankful for this firm step. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in today. Colleagues, we have about four people left, so we're getting close to the end of our list. Next up is Maria Batayola, followed by Stephanie Lowry. And Maria, if you're on the line with us, just make sure you hit star six so we can hear you. Maria, are you there? Just as a reminder, you got to hit star and then the number six so we can, we can hear you. Okay, we're still not hearing Maria. So we're going to go ahead and move to the next speaker and I'll circle back to Maria in the event that we can get her on the line. Next up is Stephanie Lowry, followed by Maddie Todd.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Stephanie Lowry and I'm calling to join community members to urge you to give your support for Council Bill 119840, the My Chance Dunlap Gettens Youth Right to Counsel Ordinance. I've had the privilege to work with youth currently incarcerated here in Washington over the last three years. I have personally seen the damaging impacts on the lives of youth who are incarcerated, many of whom were not aware of the consequence they would face by waiving their constitutional rights prior to speaking with a public defender. It is not a coincidence that these youths are primarily black youth and youth of color. As the community, we must understand we will never have justice until our youth are provided equal justice under law. I thank you for your action on this matter and I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in. Next up is Maddie Todd, followed by Joe Kunsler.
Hello, my name is Maddie Todd and I'm calling in in regards to the My Chance Dunlap Gettens Youth Rights Ordinance. Unfortunately, we have a system which arrests and incarcerates our youth instead of providing preventative services and action for them. We all know by now that your frontal lobe, which controls your impulse control and other things, has not developed until you're 25 years old. How in the world would we expect a terrified child to be intimidated into waiving their Miranda rights? We have so much proof that young people have waived their Miranda rights, given false testimony and incriminated themselves. This is not acceptable as a society that we are allowing this to happen. We are not protecting our children. Lastly, I really want to thank My Chance Dunlap Gettens parents for your comments today. Your strength after tragedy is evident and I'm so sorry that you have to be here today. My chance should still be with us. Thank you, council members.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Joe Kunsler and then we will circle back to Maria Batayola.
Thank you, Council President. This is Joe Kunsler. I'm going to make this incredibly easy. Last night, I learned that fireworks were fired at your brave police. And although I fully support efforts to reform the police and as I've spoken before, it's important to protect journalists from that awful subpoena. So obviously, there's nothing wrong with supporting that and there's nothing wrong with passing ordinance 119840. I would hope that when you discuss Resolution 31963, that you and the council condemn without qualification the use of fireworks and other weapons against the police. We don't need violent officers here. We need to reform law enforcement and stand with the cops and one last thing. And I really didn't make the email. I got pretty passionate, but you know, when this kind of rioting stuff goes on around my sound transit, I take it a little personally and I'd appreciate if efforts were extended to protect the sound transit headquarters. Sound transit is there to move the people around to jobs and opportunity. And as we fight racism globally, I'm sure we could all agree that we need to protect sound transit from rioting. We also need to, again, condemn without qualification these horrible use of fireworks and other pyrotechnic weapons against the police. As we seek to work with law enforcement to find means to de-escalate situations, I am concerned how far this could go without that condemnation. I really hope everyone in Seattle is staying safe and I hope my comments were civil, respectful and thoughtful and if they're not, I do apologize. I will always appreciate you, Council President Gonzalez, when it comes to standing up for our comments. You've done an exemplary job. Now please stand with our cops. Thank you.
Next up is, and hopefully we'll be able to hear her now, is Maria Batayola. Maria, are you there? Okay, looks like we are having challenges with that particular connection. So unfortunately, we're going to have to go ahead and move along since we do have a busy agenda before us today. Sorry that we weren't able to hear from you. Okay, so we are going to go ahead and conclude public comment for today and go ahead and move into items of business on our agenda. Next up is payment of the bills. Let's see here, payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council 119864, a property manager pays out of a claim through the week of August 3, 2020 through August 7, 2020, and ordering the payment thorough.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 119864. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the bill pass. Are there any comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item one, will the clerk please read the short title of item one into the record?
The reported the Land Use and Neighborhood Committee Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119831, relating to land use and zoning law assigned use and development standards to remove regulatory impediments and to allow the siting of childcare centers throughout the city. The committee recommends it will pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Strauss is the Chair of the Committee. You are recognized in order to provide the committee report on this item.
Thank you, Council President. I am happy and excited to bring my first bill to council today. When I took office in January, addressing childcare was and remains one of my top priorities and first priorities. Childcare touches on so many different issues, from affordability of our city to how equitable our neighborhoods are, to how we support working parents and particularly working moms who are disproportionately impacted by the childcare shortage. I hear from so many people, from neighbors and friends alike, about the childcare shortage and how it impacts daily life, from how we commute, to where we choose to live, to how we travel to and from when people need to go outside of the city to receive the childcare they need. I've heard of waitlists spanning many years. This bill is not a single solution to the affordability and accessibility challenges we face and we have much more work to do to make childcare affordable and accessible throughout Seattle. As Land Use Chair, I propose the childcare near you ordinance because with so many challenges related to childcare, the land use code should not be an additional barrier. And this bill fixes that by removing unnecessary red tape. This legislation will make childcare a permitted use in all zones, removing a conditional use permit that adds an average of five months to childcare permitting. It allows for greater flexibility in siting and exempts childcare from floor area ratio limits to incentivize developers to build more childcare space. And it makes several other technical adjustments to ease the development of childcare across the city. New childcare facilities will still be subject to city permitting and are still regulated for health and safety by Washington State Department of Children, Youth and Families. I started working on this legislation in January and land use legislation takes a long time due to environmental scoping regulations and requirements for noticing of public input. And since I began working on this, COVID-19 pandemic has made addressing childcare even more urgent. I'm excited for us to take this step today and allow for more childcare near working parents and in neighborhoods throughout the city. I want to thank Lish Whitson and Noah On who were instrumental in putting this bill together and as well as Gordon Clowers at the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections. I couldn't have done this work without your help. This legislation, the childcare near you, will encourage more childcare in neighborhoods across the city and more childcare near you. Thank you, Council President. That's the report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any comments on the bill? Okay, looks like no other council members have any comments on the bill. Councilmember Strauss, I just want to thank you for this important piece of legislation to address some of the land use and siting realities of childcare facilities throughout the city. I also want to thank our labor partners over at SEIU 195, who I know are following this bill very closely. And I also just want to acknowledge a lot of the work that our congressional delegation have done at the federal level in this period of COVID to address some of the funding issues associated with being able to access childcare as a working parent. And so I truly appreciate that this is one piece of a greater puzzle. I have been working diligently for many years on the council advocating for additional funding and access to affordable childcare and pre-K and do see this as another building block and another opportunity for us to address the realities of the childcare desert that exists here in Washington State and in Seattle, King County. So I will be proudly voting in favor of this council bill and appreciate all of the work you've done to get us to this point.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, it's great to get to take up some of the work that you and Councilmember Moskata and Councilmember Bagshaw were working on last year and there's a lot more work to do. So happy to be a partner and thanks for, to all the colleagues who wanted to co-sign onto this bill and I requested to get to run this one on my own. So thank you, everyone.
Of course. Okay, colleagues, there are no other comments on the bill, so I'm going to go ahead and close that debate. I'd ask that the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item number two, will the clerk please read Agenda Item 2 into the record?
Agenda Item 2, Council Bill 119840. An ordinance named in honor of My Chance Dunlap Gettens relating to the Seattle Police Department, prohibiting law enforcement officers from questioning except in limited circumstances person 18 years of age or younger where Miranda warning is administered unless legal counsel is provided. Prohibiting law enforcement officers from requesting permission from a person under 18 years of age to conduct a search of a person or property, dwellings or vehicles under the person's control unless legal counsel is provided for that person and adding a new section 3.2A, put 174 of the general court.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that into the record. I will move to pass Council Bill 119840. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Morales, you are the prime sponsor of the bill and I know several of us are proud cosponsors of this legislative effort. So I'm going to go ahead and recognize you in order to address this item. Please.
Thank you, Council President. Thanks, everybody. I do want to begin by thanking the parents of My Chance, Frank and Alexis, for joining us this morning and for calling to testify today in support of this bill and in honor of their son. It would certainly be an easier path for them to keep a lower profile and to grieve in isolation, but instead they've made the intentional choice to do what they can to empower other youth to understand that they have rights and really to keep the honor and the legacy of My Chance alive. So Frank and Alexis, we mourn with you and while we can't know your grief, we are grateful to know that the action we're taking today as a council can change the path of youth here in Seattle and inspire change in other places across the nation. As we've heard already, My Chance was a 17-year-old high school senior from Des Moines who had dreams of going to law school and one day being a champion for the rights of young people. He was tragically shot in King County by the King County Law Enforcement in 2017 before he had a chance to realize those dreams. And I'm certain that if My Chance was here today, he would be with us defending the rights of young people with regard to this ordinance. This bill establishes some safeguards for young people who are asked to waive their Miranda rights when detained by a police officer. The bill would protect children under 18 by ensuring that they consult with council prior to waiving their constitutional rights to interrogation or requesting requests for searches. The bill does include an exception that allows officers to interrogate children without counsel if they reasonably believe the information sought is necessary to protect life from imminent threat. Colleagues, we've heard before when the community advocates and the public defenders were here the beginning of August, we know that studies find that due to their continuing brain development, children may not have the mental capacity to make decisions that have serious, long-term impacts on their lives. That means that when youth are in a situation where they may be approached or questioned by a police officer, they may have a harder time asserting their constitutional right to silence and the right to refuse to be searched. We also know that children of color are disproportionately stopped by law enforcement and incarcerated. In King County, 73.2% of children charged in 2018 were children of color. Between January and September of 2019, 86.5% of youth incarcerated were children of color. I'm going to say that again, in King County, between January and September of 2019, 86.5% of youth incarcerated were children of color. I want to say for all of us that this is so much more than just a piece of legislation. This is legal protection for young people and particularly for young people in my district whose lived experience dictates that law enforcement does not necessarily have their best interests in mind. Many people have spoken about the lack of trust between young people in particular and law enforcement, and this is a recognition of the way that communities of color have been policed, particularly young, black and brown men. Many people have spoken already about the need for protecting young people. I want to thank the folks who called in. We did receive a memo in July from the King County Prosecutor and from the Sheriff's Office where they state that this proposal would further erode trust between juveniles and law enforcement and could lead to increased danger in the community. As Sean Good has said and other callers have said, "You can't erode what's not there." This ordinance is intended to help rebuild some trust by ensuring that young people have their rights protected and requiring that law enforcement assist them in seeking counsel before they are questioned. And I do want to say that young people can choose to assert their autonomy after they've been provided legal counsel. They can still choose to speak to law enforcement if they want to. The difference is that we're demanding that they have their right to counsel, that that not be waived, that we recognize interactions with law enforcement are inherently coercive because of the power dynamics at play. So we want young people to have the information they need to make informed decisions that would inevitably impact their lives. The steps this council is taking would ensure that we protect our young people and that this would be the first of many pieces that we need to do to dismantle the racism that is embedded in our criminal legal system and stop the school to prison pipeline. As Councilmember Herbald mentioned this morning, this bill did pass in King County Council in their Law and Justice Committee by a 4-1 vote. I want to thank King County Councilmember Germaiz Ahalai for his work in moving this I want to thank King County Councilmember Germaiz Ahalai for his work in moving this at the county level. This bill will be heard tomorrow in the full King County Council, and I will also say that the county council's law department had no issues with the ordinance and were actually helpful in drafting it so that it could pass in the county level. I'll have a closing remark, but I will stop there and happy to take questions from our colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales, Morales, for those remarks. Really appreciate it. Are there any other comments on the bill? Okay, looks like, okay, Councilmember Herbald, please.
Thank you. I've spoken numerous times about this bill. I really appreciate the partnership of Councilmember Morales in, in developing it. And the, the main thing I wanted to really make a point to add is to thank you, Council President Gonzalez, for allowing us to hear this on our full council agenda during a period of time where we are not having regular committee meetings. It really is appreciated that the urgency for acting on this piece of legislation is shared by all of us on, on the council and that there is such strong support for moving this forward. In addition to Councilmember Morales, I want to also thank her staff, Darazal Touch, my staff, Alex Clardy, and of course, our friends at the Public Defense, Department of Public Defense, and all of the members of the public for their hard work on this legislation, including the family members of, of my chance. It's just so important that we are able to honor his life with this critical reform that expresses our commitment to zero youth detention by recognizing that sometimes at the, the first interactions with law enforcement, those are the actions that often begin the, the, the types of interactions that can result in, in detention and dramatically changing people's lives. I also just want to finally, in, in closing, just recognize, I just think this is just common sense of, of an approach. It is common sense to want to do everything that we can in our city to ensure that young people not only know what their rights are, they, they understand them and they know how to act upon them. This is just really, I think, an important step that we as a council can take to show that we not only understand that there is a power imbalance between young people and law enforcement, we understand that there's reason for young people to not always trust those in power, particularly those in law enforcement, and that we want to take this action because, because we care about our young people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. Councilmember Strauss?
Just briefly, want to thank the parents of my, my chance for speaking today and turning your grief into a, an important bill that we're taking up today. I want to thank Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Herbald. This is important legislation. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Colleagues, are there any other comments on the bill? Okay, I just wanted to say really quickly, thank you also to Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Herbald for your work on this. As, as one of several mothers on this city council, I would be just completely horrified if I found out that, that my own child was detained and questioned without legal counsel available. And so I think, I think it's so important for us to make sure that we, we acknowledge how, as Councilmember Herbald said, how common sense this approach is and, and how frankly overdue this legislation is in terms of providing this obvious legal protection to young folks who don't yet appreciate the significance of, of their right to remain silent in the event that they are detained. And this is a step forward in making sure that, that the power dynamic and differential that exists between law enforcement and children is reflected in their access to legal services that could, could quite literally make the difference between life and, and life in jail or, or liberty at home. And I, I just think that the, the action that we're going to take here is so significant in advancing that basic principle that I'm, I was really proud to join up as a cosponsor and will be proudly supporting the, the passage of this council bill here today. So colleagues, just want to go ahead and close out debate by handing it back over to Councilmember Morales, who's going to bring it home for us before we call the roll.
Great, thanks, everybody. So I do just want to thank again the community members who brought this forward, organizations like Choose 180, Creative Justice, Community Passageways, the King County Department of Public Defense. I want to thank Greg Doss on Central Staff, who's been guiding us along the way and taking lots of questions and providing lots of information for us as we process how to incorporate the feedback that we've been hearing. And I do want to also thank my own staff, Darazal Touch, who has spent hours working with public defenders, with community to make sure that we are keeping our young people safe. So, thank you, Darazal, and I'm ready to vote.
Great, let's do it. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes, ma'am.
Council President Gonzalez, I apologize. Councilmember Morales, did you want to add one more sponsor to this bill before we vote on it?
I'm sorry, I did not hear your question.
Did you want to add one more sponsor to this bill before we vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I understood Councilmember Sawant wants to also cosponsor this bill, and so she's not here today. So if that's possible, I would like to add her, please. Thank you.
Is there an opportunity to join you? Sorry if that's out of order.
It is not out of, it's not out of order because we're, we're addressing the issues related to additional cosponsors for the record. So Councilmember Strauss? Councilmember Sawant will both be added as, as cosponsors for purposes of the legislative record. Madam Clerk, is there anything else that you need on that front?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, colleagues, let's go ahead and go back now to calling the roll on the passage of the bill. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda Item Three, will the clerk please read Agenda Item Three into the record?
Agenda Item Three, Resolution 31963, reporting the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act of 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to adopt Resolution 31963. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Peterson, you are the sponsor of the resolution and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. So Resolution 31963 simply voices our support for the important national effort to pass the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act. That's federal bill HR 7120, introduced by Congresswoman Karen Bass, Democrat from California, and supported by Seattle's congressional delegation, Pramila Jayapal and Adam Smith. If it passed the U.S. House of Representatives but has yet to advance in the U.S. Senate, this federal bill addresses many concerns raised by protesters that are authorized by federal law, such as the need to restrict qualified immunity for police officers across the nation. Resolution 31963, which urges immediate passage of HR 7120 by the U.S. Senate, was reviewed by our Office of Intergovernmental Relations. I'd like to thank Malik Davis on my staff and Dan Eater on Central Staff for working on this resolution for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, both for those remarks and bringing this resolution forward for our consideration. Are there any comments on the resolution? Okay, hearing no comments on the resolution. I just once again want to thank you, Councilmember Peterson, in your office for bringing forward this important resolution. Of course, there was a caller who mentioned that perhaps it wouldn't be wise to vote on this resolution since, since it's calling for federal action. But I, I definitely do support that we need to have action at all levels of government to address the significance of the policing issues being highlighted in this moment of racial reckoning across the nation. And while there are certain things that we can certainly act on here locally, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be requesting and coordinating with our federal delegation to take, to take legislative action at the federal level to also improve the system of policing for all Americans, including those that are here in Seattle. So appreciate your effort on, on this resolution and look forward to voting in support of it. Okay, colleagues, it looks like no one else has any questions or comments, so we'll go ahead and ask the clerk to call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. The resolution is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda Item Four, will the clerk please read Item Four into the record?
Agenda Item Four, Council Bill 119742, vacating portions of the alleys in Block Three north addition to West Seattle and the West Seattle Junction and accepting a property use and development agreement on the petition of the Whittaker Economic Association and Washington nonprofit corporation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 119742. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Peterson, you are the sponsor of the bill and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. Council Bill 119742 would finalize the partial vacation of an alley already approved for the Whittaker mixed-use project in West Seattle. The project has been built on the southwest corner of Southwest Alaska Street and Font Leroy Way. The item was heard in the Transportation Utilities Committee March 4, and SDOT and Central Staff confirmed all conditions included in the street vacation approval have been met. So I, that's all.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any questions or comments on this bill? Councilmember Herbald, please.
Thank you. Boy, March 4th, so long ago we heard this. So I just went up for the public record, went to clarify that we did have some question during the committee about whether or not the project met guidelines and best practices when it came to a right-hand turn only out of the alley onto Font Leroy. And these conditions were related to the, the, the agreement for the, for the street vacation. The concern was that there was no sign stating that the right-hand turn only, uh, that there, that there was a, it said there was an arrow on the roadway and double yellow lines, which are, of course, illegal to cross on Font Leroy. After committee, staff reviewed this and followed up and found that the street improvement permit for the Whittaker and the project as though does comply with the city's permits. As was mentioned, a double yellow line is a standard engineering approach to addressing left-hand turns onto two-way streets from driveways and alleys. I understand there was some expectation that there would be a sign, but the council's approval of the vacation, of course, did not dictate an approach to this and left it up to the engineers at SDOT to determine the best way to address the issue. There is another issue that was raised during the committee discussion, and that relates specifically to the signage on the building itself on the northeast corner and that the final recommendations from the Design Review Board stated that the, the signage plan did not allow the use of a backlit plastic, plastic barrier, I'm sorry, plastic banner-shaped signs. In fact, that is the type of signage that is on the building right now. SDCI, as a result of this, has an open case to determine whether or not a violation has occurred, but this is not a, a requirement of the, the, the street vacation permit. And although I appreciate it being brought up within the context of those, of those deliberations, since it was not specifically part of the street improvement permit, it is, was a, a Design Review Board recommendation, the fact that there may be a violation does not, does not impact my vote on approving the street vacation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald, for those comments. Really appreciate it. Are there any other comments on the bill? Hearing none. Councilmember Peterson, anything else to add before we vote?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item number five, will the clerk please read Item Number Five into the record?
Agenda Item Five, Council Bill 119844, relating to a pedestrian skybridge over and across Sixth Avenue north of Pine Street, amend the ordinance 118631 to update insurance and bond requirements, amending the annual fee and other terms and conditions of the permit, renewing the terms of the permit to MPH Pacific Place LLC, providing for acceptance of the permit and conditions and ratifying confirming certain prior acts.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to pass Council Bill 119844. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Peterson, this is another one of your bills, so you are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. Council Bill 119844 would renew permission to maintain the skybridge between Pacific Place Shopping Mall and Nordstrom Flagship Store. SDOT recommends approval, and our Central Staff expressed no concerns with this renewal.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Any questions or comments on the bill? Okay, hearing none, we will go ahead and call the roll. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes and the chair will sign it, and I'd ask that the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. Item Six, will the clerk please read Agenda Item Six into the record?
Agenda Item Six, Council Bill 119845, granting ONI DEU LLC permission to construct, maintain and operate a below-grade private thermal energy exchange system under and across John Street, East of Born Avenue and west of Tharview Avenue North for 15-year term, renewable for, for one, successful 15-year term specifying the conditions under which the permit is granted and providing for the acceptance of the permit and condition.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to pass Council Bill 119845. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Peterson, you are the sponsor and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. Council Bill 119845 would grant final approval for a utility tunnel under John Street in South Lake Union. The tunnel would be used for a heat exchange system to transfer heat between an office project being developed on the site of the former Seattle Times building and a residential project being developed on the block to the south. Last September, the council granted conditional approval of this tunnel. All conditions included in the conditional approval have been met or will be met once the tunnel is built. SDOT recommends approval, and Central Staff expressed no concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any comments on the bill? Seeing and hearing no additional comments on the bill, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, item number seven. Will the clerk please read item seven into the record?
Agenda item seven, Council Bill 119846, granting SMRE Market Site LLC permission to maintain and operate a pedestrian skybridge over and across Post Alley at the north margin of Union Street for 15-year term, renewable for one successive 15-year term, specifying the conditions under which this permit is granted, providing for the acceptance of the permit and conditions and ratifying confirming search and prior act.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 119846. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Peterson, as sponsor of the bill, you are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. Council Bill 119846 would renew permission to maintain the skybridge over Post Alley at Union Street at the south end of the Pike Place Market. The skybridge provides a connection between market-side apartments and first Ave. SDOT recommends approval, and our central staff expressed no concerns for this renewal.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, Agenda item eight. Will the clerk please read the short titles of items eight through 14 into the record?
Agenda items eight through 14. Council Bill 119850, relating to the Department of Transportation, authorized by the Director of the Department of Transportation to require, accept, and record on behalf of the City of Seattle a quick claim deed from King County. Council Bill 119851, accepting various fees for city... for streets or alley purposes. Council Bill 119852, accepting 20 limited purpose easements for public sidewalk and emergency vehicle street or alley turnaround purposes. Council Bill 119853, accepting various fees for streets or alley purposes. Council Bill 119854, accepting various streets... deeds for street or alley purposes. Council Bill 119855, accepting 20 limited purpose easements for public sidewalk, walkway, pedestrian alley utilities, bicycle, and bridge purposes. Council Bill 119856, accepting various fees for streets or alley purposes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading those items into the record. The clerk has read items eight through 14 into the record. Each bill will be moved for a separate vote. And Councilmember Peterson, I understand, is prepared to address all seven items at once and then answer questions related to all seven in order to help move us through these agenda items. So we will begin with item eight. So again, we're going to move each item separately, but Councilmember Peterson is going to address all of the items in his remarks. So I will move to pass Council Bill 119850. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Peterson, as a sponsor of these bills, you are recognized in order to address items eight through 14.
Thank you, Council President. So the first one, Council Bill 119850, accepts four small parcels from King County. These are remnant parcels located across the city and have generally functioned as rights of way. Both SDOT and central staff recommend approval of Council Bill 119840... or 850, excuse me. Now, for the next few items, Council Bills 119851 through 119856, these items nine through 14 on today's agenda, allow me to just read from the central staff memo, which sums it up perfectly from Calvin Chow. So these council bills are packages of property deeds and easements acquired by the city as a result of permitting decisions on private development activity. Typically, these transactions are bundled into legislation throughout the year and transmitted to council on a rolling basis. Due to the reduced city council schedule during COVID-19, these six council bills have been transmitted together and would authorize several property transactions at once. SDOT and central staff recommend approval of this legislation.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any questions on any of the eight... excuse me, seven items read into the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We're going to go through each one of these if there are no comments on items eight through 14. So last call. Any comments on items eight through 14? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and have the clerk call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 119850.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. And I'd ask that the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation. Okay, item nine has already been read into the record, so I will move to pass Council Bill 119851. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any other comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, Agenda item number 10 has already been read into the record and described, so I will move to pass Council Bill 119852. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any other comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda item 11 likewise has been read into the record and described by Councilmember Peterson, so I will move to pass Council Bill 119853. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. I'd ask that the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. Okay, item 12 has been read into the record and described by Councilmember Peterson, so I will move to pass Council Bill 119854. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any comments? Any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda item 13 has likewise been read into the record and described by Councilmember Peterson, so I will move to pass Council Bill 119855. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, last property and easement bill here. Item number 14. Again, this bill has been read into the record and already described by Councilmember Peterson, so I will move to pass Council Bill 119856. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing no additional comments on the bill, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, Agenda item 15. Madam Clerk, this is still in my script, but I believe it might have been removed. Is that correct?
Not at this point, Council President. Council President... Councilmember Peterson is prepared to move to refer this item.
Great, thank you so much. Will the clerk please read item 15 into the rec...
Agenda item 15, Council Bill 119857, relating to the City Light Department, clarifying that residents living in the City Light Department-owned housing in the Diablo and New Halum communities are subject to the City Light Department's rates under Chapter 21.49 and 21.56 of the State of the Code, and amending Section 21.56.030 of the State of the Code and RAS site and confirming search and prior act.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, I understand that this bill requires additional attention, and there is a proposal that it be referred to the Transportation and Utilities Committee, so I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Peterson to make your motion for the referral of this bill.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, so lots of executive departments trying to get legislation through. We just passed a lot of legislation, and so this one, I think, would benefit from brief discussion in committee. So I move that Council Bill 119857 be referred to the Transportation and Utilities Committee for further consideration.
Thank you so much for that motion. Are there comments on the committee referral? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the committee referral?
Did I get a second?
Second. I second. My script didn't call for a second, so I assume that the city clerk did that accurately and that the motion did not require a second. Madam Clerk, can you please confirm that that is accurate?
It can have a second, but if it didn't have a second and we move forward to call the vote, it'd be just fine.
There you go. So we were chugging along without that second because it didn't seem to be necessary. I appreciate it. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the committee referral?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the bill is referred to the Transportation and Utilities Committee for further consideration. Thank you so much, colleagues. Agenda item 16. Will the clerk please read item 16 into the record?
Agenda item 16, Council Bill 119859, relating to taxation delaying the effective date of the heating oil tax on heating oil service provided and providers under Chapter 5.47 of the State of the Code and delaying the date of the Office of Sustainability and Environment's first annual heating oil tax program status report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 119859. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Morales, I understand you are the sponsor of the bill, so you are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you. Yes, so Council Bill 119859 would delay for one year, as I mentioned this morning, the effective date of the heating oil tax that was adopted in 2019. As I said, the intent of the original ordinance was to tax heating oil in an effort to accelerate the rate of conversion from oil heat to electric heat pump systems. In response to community feedback about the impacts of this tax on low-income and middle-income households, particularly during COVID, OSC is proposing we delay implementation for one year. And just to give you an example of why this could be cost prohibitive for many families, we know that the average cost to convert oil to electric heat and decommission an oil tank is about $13,000 per tank. And that doesn't include the cost for cleanup if those tanks have leaked under somebody's home. So that can run $40,000, $50,000. So this is really, especially when some of these homes that have oil heating are very old and there's a high likelihood that these tanks could potentially leak or be damaged in transition, it's important that we take a pause on implementing this tax so that we set up systems to be able to support families better. The, as the memo that you all received indicated, we are also looking at some possible changes to the Pollution Liability Insurance Agency. I'll talk about that in a moment with the amendment. But we do want to make sure that families are getting all the assistance they can with loans or grants to be able to afford the cost of making this switch. And until we've got those set up, we want to push back the start date of this for a year.
Great, thank you so much, Councilmember Morales, for that description of the underlying bill. I do understand that you have an amendment, as you just alluded to, so why don't we go ahead and address the amendment first, and then we'll have an amended version of the legislation before us, and then we can open it up for questions on the bill as amended.
Great, so I move that we amend Council Bill 119859.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment 1. Councilmember Morales, please feel free to address Amendment 1.
Thank you. So this amendment would request that the Office of Sustainability and the Environment provide a status report to council by June of next year, June 1, 2021, regarding the rulemaking for the Pollution Liability Insurance Agency's new Heating Oil Loan and Grant Program. We are especially interested in how that program will avoid creating undue economic hardship on low- and middle-income homeowners with oil heat and how the city will implement the Heating Oil Tax and Home Conversion Program to protect low- and middle-income homeowners from undue hardship. Additionally, the report should include a summary of feedback from key stakeholders about whether the effective date of the tax should be September 1, 2021, or if there should be an additional delay at that time due to economic conditions or the status of COVID, who knows where we will be next summer, or any other factors that might be implied at that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Are there any questions on, questions or comments on Amendment 1? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment 1?
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbl.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the amendment is adopted, and now we have an amended version of the bill in front of us. So are there any further comments on the bill as amended? Hearing none. Oh, Councilmember Herbl, please.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to, for a little bit of history around amendments that I offered when we first passed this legislation last year. I, like Councilmember Morales, was very worried that the legislation would have a negative impact on seniors and low-income people since they are most likely to have their homes heated by oil. And so I have proposed an amendment to address these concerns, and they were supposed to report back to us on their impact, on their analysis of the impact of the bill on seniors and to fully fund conversions for low-income households. I also proposed an amendment to delay implementation of the tax from July 1 to September 1. So here we are, further delaying implementation and still laser-focused on trying to find out more about what the impacts would be on seniors and low-income people who are most likely to have their homes heated by oil. And really appreciate Councilmember Morales' amendment and bringing the legislation forward so we can ensure that the council will receive a status update in advance of September 1, 2021.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Herbl, and I also appreciate Councilmember Morales bringing this forward in conjunction with the Office of Sustainability and Environment to make sure that we in, and now these period of time where the economy is so uncertain, it is even more important for us to make sure that we have all the relevant information before us to understand any disproportionate impact that may result unintentionally and unintended by this particular council bill that we passed last year. So appreciate you bringing it forward. Are there any other comments on the bill? Councilmember Morales, anything else to add?
I think we're good.
Okay, great. With that being said, I'd ask that the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill as amended.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbl.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes as amended, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item number 17. Will the clerk please read item 17 into the record?
Agenda item 17, Council Bill 119847 relating to historic preservation, imposing controls upon the Canterbury Court, a landmark designated by the Landmark Preservation Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to pass Council Bill 119847. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Strauss, you are the sponsor of the bill and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. Council Bill 119847 imposes controls on the Canterbury Court. This legislation acknowledges the designation of the Canterbury Court as a historic landmark by the Landmarks Preservation Board and imposes controls and incentives. The Canterbury Court is a Tudor-style apartment complex that was built in 1929 in the university district just south of a future light rail station. It is designated based on its distinctive visual characteristics of the Tudor revival style, and the controls in this agreement apply to the site and the exterior of the building.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any comments on the bill? Hearing no additional comments on the bill, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbl.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda item 18. Will the clerk please read Agenda item 18 into the record?
Agenda item 18, Council Bill 119848 relating to historic preservation, imposing controls upon the University of Washington Engineering Annex, a landmark designated by the Landmark Preservation Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 119848. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Strauss, you're the sponsor of the bill and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you. Council Bill 119848, control, imposes controls on the UW Engineering Annex. This legislation acknowledges the designation of the University of Washington's Engineering Annex as a historic landmark and imposes the controls. This engineering annex was built in 1909 as part of the Alaska Yukon Pacific Exposition and is being designated because of its association with both the exposition and the university's history. It has very distinctive visual characteristics, and something that's interesting to note is that the majority of the buildings built for the Alaska Yukon Pacific Exposition were built as temporary structures. So this was built as one of the few permanent structures and was the first foundry this side of the Mississippi that the public could view. This was built as a demonstration site where folks could see how the foundry works, how you smelt metal into tools and other important things that they were using in Alaska on the way for the gold rush. This controls, the controls in this agreement apply only to the site and exterior of the building.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing no additional comments on the bill, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbl.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda item 19. Will the clerk please read item 19 into the record?
Agenda item 19, Council Bill 119849 relating to historic conservation, imposing controls upon the Royview Apartments, a landmark designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 119849. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Strauss, you are the prime sponsor of the bill and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. This legislation acknowledges the designation of the Royview Apartments as a historic landmark, imposing controls and incentives. The Royview was built in 1924 in Capitol Hill, and it actually still has the original landscaping. Hans Peterson, the builder, also built the Ballard Bridge and the first portion of the King County Courthouse that two later additions went on top of. It is being designated for its distinctive characteristics as a courtyard apartment and at the end of the English Gothic Revival style. It has an outstanding, the work of the developers was outstanding, and the Bergman Brothers took a large portion of this, and because of the prominence of its neighborhood is why it is coming before the historic designation. The controls would apply to the site and exterior of the building.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing no additional comments on the bill, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbl.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes and the chair will sign it, and I'd ask that the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. Item number 20. We're getting close, folks. Item number 20. Will the clerk please read item 20 into the record?
Agenda item 20, Resolution 31964 sponsoring and requesting the entrance of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority into the Association of Washington City's Employee Benefit Trust.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to adopt Resolution 31964. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Lewis, you are the prime sponsor of the resolution and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief since we, this long agenda is, we're getting sort of close to the end here, so I don't want to keep this here any longer than we need to be. So suffice it to say, this is a critical part of our participation in our ongoing regional efforts to stand up our countywide focus on combating the crisis of so many of our neighbors living on sheltered outside. I'm happy to bring this forward and to further formalize a lot of the relationships that are fundamental to that shared ultimate goal, and would just urge the passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Are there any additional comments on the resolution? Hearing no additional comments on the resolution, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbl.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, agenda item 21. Will the clerk please read Agenda item 21 into the record?
Agenda item 21, Resolution 31965, delegating temporary authority to the city clerk to set the time and place for a hearing on any appeals from the report, findings, recommendations, and decision of the hearing examiner on the final assessment role for local improvement district number 6751, and directing that the city clerk provide any required notice of the hearing in the manner required by law.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to adopt Resolution 31965. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. I am happy to report that Councilmember Juarez is with us this afternoon as the sponsor of the resolution. She's going to address this item in a fashion that is much more, that is much better than the way I did this morning. So I'm happy to have Councilmember Juarez here and hand it over to her to address this item. Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you, President Gonzalez, particularly for leading the introduction on the waterfront lid assessment this morning. In defense of you, however, this has been going on for many years, so you shouldn't hold yourself out to be not doing a good job. I think you did a great job. Anyway, this is a necessary piece of legislation and for administrative and required by law. The council may not approve the final assessment role for the waterfront lid, that's the local improvement district, without reviewing and deciding upon appeals of the hearing examiner's recommendation on the final assessment role. And I'll come back to that in a minute, Council President. This resolution delegates temporary authority to the city clerk to meet the deadline, to set the time and place for appeals in case the deadline occurs during summer recess. That would be from August 24th to September 4th. Appeals will be referred to my committee, the Public Assets and Native Communities Committee, and this resolution stipulates that the clerk must schedule no earlier than December 1st to accommodate for recess and budget proceedings. As I shared, the lid is the local improvement district, and the fun fact, it's lid number 6751, which that means it is the 6,751st lid to be approved or on the, for us to consider. We've been doing lids since the early 1900s. We've been working on this lid, Seattle Waterfront, for well over three years, working with the Seattle Waterfront folks and businesses, nonprofit condo owners, property owners, commercial property owners, working with the Office of Waterfront for over four years, which has been great, working with Marshall Foster and Dory Costa. If you recall, Council President, about two years ago, I believe, we hired a hearing examiner to get public comments and concerns that would be noted about this tax being imposed. We were working with law and the executive to adjust the tax, the amount, the deferral, and the timeframe and calculation of such tax. We had a report from the hearing examiner last fall, and we expect one final report, the final assessment role. We're hoping that that report comes in late August to late September. So basically, this resolution is just protection in the event that the report by the hearing examiner is filed during the recess, and this would just give the clerk the authority to, and Eric's on the line too, I'm guessing, to go ahead and hold this until we had an, council had an opportunity to put it in our committee and make a decision. As you know, this kind of tax requires notice to those affected and those who may want to appeal. So with that being said, I would encourage my colleagues the passage of Resolution 31965. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez, for that description of the resolution and for your ongoing work on the waterfront lid through your committee. Also want to thank the hearing examiner for all of the work they've been doing in response to your direction and vision on how to structure the substantive and appeal process issues in a way that is fair and equitable and transparent. Really appreciate all of the work that the hearing examiner and his staff have been doing. And lastly, just want to say thanks to our city clerk's office, who's also going to be playing a role now. So I will be gladly joining you in support of this resolution.
Madam President, may I make an inquiry? And if you want to note this, that we are still in a quasi-judicial phase, that we are not allowed to be taking any kind of personal emails or comments from the public while this is still under the guidance and jurisdiction, if you will, of the hearing examiner?
Absolutely. I made comments to that effect this morning at council briefing, and I think it's important to note it again here in open public session during our full council, so I appreciate that reminder and admonition to council members related to this particular quasi-judicial matter.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments, any additional comments on the resolution? Hearing and seen none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbl.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The resolution is adopted, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Item 22. Will the clerk please read item 22 into the record?
Agenda item 22, Appointment 1591, appointment of LaRonde Baker as member, Community Police Commission for Term 2, December 31, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so I will move to confirm, appoint 1591. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbl. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. Councilmember Herbl, you are the sponsor of this appointment and are recognized in order to address the item.
Thank you so much. LaRonde Baker is appointed by the Community Police Commission to the public defense position listed as a category for the CPC to appoint in the accountability legislation adopted by the city council in 2017. Again, the CPC is an appointing authority, and they are required to appoint to specific categories, creating sort of the full complement of skills that we all value being represented on the CPC. The other three positions that the CPC is the appointment authority for are positions to the CPC representing civil liberties, the Seattle Police Officers Guild, and the Seattle Police Management Association. LaRonde Baker's background and qualifications to fill this public defense position are exceptional. She works as a special counsel for affirmative litigation and policy at the King County Department of Public Defense. In this role, she spearheads DPD's inquest program and represents families who have lost loved ones to police violence and represents them in inquest proceedings. She has 10 years of civil rights and civil liberties litigation and policy experience, having previously served in the General Civil Rights Unit of the State Attorney General's Office and the ACLU. She has also served as counsel in the landmark True Blood versus DSHS case and worked on successful voting rights in immigrant rights cases, religious accommodation cases for inmates as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbl, for those comments. Are there any additional comments on this appointment? Okay, hearing no additional comments on this appointment, will the clerk please call the roll on the legislation? Okay, hearing no additional comments on this appointment, will the clerk please call the role on the legislation?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Items 23 and 24, will the clerk please read items 23 and 24 into the record?
Agenda items 23 and 24, Appointment 1592 and 1593, Appointment of Judith M. Tobin as member Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission for Term 2, December 31st, 2021. Appointment of Hardeep Singh Rekhi as member Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission for Term 2, December 31st, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to confirm Appointments 1592 and 1593. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointments. I am the sponsor of these appointments and will address them first and then open the floor to any comments, if there are any. Colleagues today before us are the appointments of Judy Tobin and Hardeep Singh Rekhi to the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission. Of course, the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission is the independent body and agency at the city of Seattle that is responsible for both enforcing our ethics code, not only as it relates to us as elected officials and to the mayor's office and to the city attorney's office, all elected officials at the city, but also as it relates to employees at the city of Seattle and also deals with managing the elections component of the city of Seattle elections, everything from the Democracy Voucher Program to other alleged violations related to the city's elections code. So this is an incredibly important commission that serves an important function at the city of Seattle. I myself had had the pleasure of serving on the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission before becoming a council member and can value the significant and importance of making sure that we have nominees and appointees who are going to serve that entity well because it is such an important function. Judy is a mayoral appointment and brings a lot of community volunteer experience with her. She served as public member on the Washington State Medical Quality Assurance Commission and has chaired important work on the boards of the Wing Luke Asian Museum, Pike Market Medical Clinic, Pacific Hospital, and King County's Veterans, Seniors and Human Services Levy, as well as the Seattle Center Advisory Commission. Her, again, appointment is made by the mayor and her term would go through December 31st of 2021. Hardeep is a council appointment and he sits on the board of the Washington Employment Lawyers Association. And he is also a former board member of One America, the Washington State Association for Justice, and the South Asian Bar Association. Hardeep has been serving on the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission for, I believe, the last two years. He was serving the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission as a mayoral appointee and the mayor chose to not reappoint him. But we have also heard from our communications with the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission that Hardeep has served very well on the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission. And in fact, I think his last role was serving as the vice chair of the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission. And there is strong support amongst the commission to have Hardeep continue in his role as a member of the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission. And I have known Hardeep for many, for many years. And I believe he is a reasonable, rational thinker and brings, in addition to much needed diversity on the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission, brings with him a strong set of legal experience that is really important to being a fact finder and a arbiter in these important issues that come before the Seattle Ethics and Elections Committee. So those are the nominees. I'm happy to take any questions or hear any other comments on these appointments. Any comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the role on the confirmation of both appointments?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the appointments are confirmed. Last item of business on our agenda, colleagues, it's item 25. Will the clerk please read Agenda item 25 into the record?
Agenda item 25, Appointment 1602, Reappointment of Chris Metford as member City Light Review Panel for Term 2, April 11th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to confirm Appointment 1602. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. Councilmember Peterson, you're the sponsor of this appointment and are recognized in order to address the item.
Thank you, Council President. This is a mayoral reappointment of economist Chris Metford to the Seattle City Light Review Panel. Mr. Metford founded his research firm, Community Attributes, in 2005 and has helped many stakeholders in the city and the region by forecasting economic conditions to assist with planning. The city of Seattle and the region are blessed to have a publicly owned electric utility and one that produces electricity through clean energy. At the same time, our responsibility is massive with its budget exceeding $1 billion and the need to serve 900,000 people 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We are fortunate, though, that people as qualified as Mr. Metford want to continue to serve the public and provide oversight on the Seattle City Light Review Panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any additional comments on the appointment? Hearing no additional comments on the appointment, will the clerk please call the role on the confirmation of the appointment?
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Other business, is there any further business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll move to adjournment. Colleagues, this does conclude the items of business on today's very long agenda. This is the last city council meeting before the council recess, which does begin on August 24th and ends on Labor Day, September 7th. So again, as a reminder to the members of the public, there will be no city council or council briefing meetings or committee meetings occurring between August 24th, 2020 through Monday, September 7th. Monday, September 7th, the council will be off in observance of Labor Day. Our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. Again, a reminder that because Monday is a holiday, our full council and our council briefing schedule shifts to Tuesday, September 8th. So I do hope that all of you have a wonderful afternoon and I look forward to reconvening after our short but very needed summer recess. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.